I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lou. I would like to start with our exemplary people. Joe?
You got it. I think it was about a year ago. Try to make you as uncomfortable as possible. I know how happy Bill is here. He loves the limelight. About a year ago, when Bill Holdsworth first approached me about a STEM grant that the district could possibly qualify for. Since then, Bill has done just an amazing job seeing this around full circle, securing about $200,000 worth of funds for the district, grant funds for the district. So, I thought it only appropriate that we give him just a small golf clap before he leaves tonight. We recognize him for his efforts. I'm going to ask Paul just to come in and just say a few words because I know Paul's much more familiar with the purchases that we were able to make with the grant funds.
What's that? He bet on UConn?
And joining me will be Bill.
What a publicist.
Yeah, so, as Joe said, a year ago, we secured those funds. But actually, this process goes back two years when we were, I guess we could say we were eligible for this grant through the US Department of Education. And initially, at least it was sold to me that, hey, you know, you fill out a little form and you get $200,000 for STEM. And I said, oh, that's easy. Where do I sign? And what really came forth was this mammoth application. I mean, it was absolutely mammoth. And it referred to United States code in the language. I mean, you know, I looked at it, my eyes immediately glazed over. So, Bill really, he took the ball and ran with it. And, you know, he consulted with me as needed about what we were going to use the grant for. Initially, it had changed because we had thought we were going to use it for specifically STEM labs. But, of course, you know, everything at that level of government kind of takes a while. So, the STEM lab was already bought and paid for, so we couldn't use it for that anymore. You know, like that I was trying to be politically correct. But that said, we saw another opportunity that directly impacted STEM. And that was the laptops for the STEM and middle school campuses and the interactive displays, which were, if you guys recall, part of my five-year capital plan anyway. So, Bill worked tirelessly getting this application in to the feds and we got approved and the rest is history, so.
Wow.
Nice job.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
We allotted 20 minutes for speech.
Any more rabbits you can pull out of a hat?
I'm actually going to hit them up after this for a few thousand more.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bill, thank you. We truly appreciate it. It helps the town, it helps us.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
And, well, don't say that because we're going to keep giving you applications. Good job. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
That's good.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Best believe needed. Good job.
Thank you.
I was hoping you weren't going to ask for a picture because I'd have to stand on a chair. All right, moving right along. Anyone sign up for public participation? Anyone here for public participation? Hearing none. We'll move on to the report of the chair. I have none, sorry. We shall move on to the consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes? There were two of them. I know one of them needed a slight change as mentioned, but anything? Any questions on the warrant? Excellent.
Looked right at you, Dennis.
Yeah. Our first time having budget transfers as well in the consent agenda, first time using it. Are the members of this board okay with that format? Seemed pretty straight up to me. Any questions on those transfers? Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Dennis, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. Reports of the committees? Students are at Quinnipiac watching the game?
Squad base?
Yes.
I have the NFHS network, so we can put that on behind us.
There you go.
Yep, I know. I know. There's buses heading up there.
It's just starting. We can turn it on.
It's just starting.
Yep, all right. That's why I'm hurrying up. I am going to report that we had a safety committee meeting on Thursday, March 16th, via Zoom. And everything is going very well. Drills are being done, plans are being made, and the reunification two-day drill that is going on is all very, very good work happening with safety committee. Any others you met tonight?
We'll have a couple policies up for first review.
Okay. Any other reports? No? Okay. We'll keep going. Reporter of the superintendent, Joe?
I'll turn it over to Ron at first for the review of the fund activity statement. So, everything is actually tracking on a global basis really well. So, we're sitting good. There are a couple of athletic transportation utilities are running a little hot, but we should be able to, you know, we will be able to cover it in other spots. So, no real points of concern or law. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on the general fund operating activity?
If I can add to that, Board of Finances meeting?
Thursday.
This Thursday, Joe is going to present our budget, questions and answers. Dennis, you going? I'm going to go.
I'll go. Did they give you pre-questions or no?
I spoke to Mike Mangio today. He was, and I think Ron saw it go out to the Board of Finance, just soliciting any questions. And they were going to vet them back through Mike and send them to us ahead of time. And Mike, we're not going to do a full presentation there. I spoke to Mike about that. He was just kind of interested in, you know, what do we know, you know, kind of where are we with the grants? What do we get? What do we use? What are we going to have left? And then, you know, what's the new information that we have now? I had shared some of that with, I've been sharing stuff with Board of Finance all along, but it'll be a good time to kind of give them that all once again. I talked to them at the last meeting about our, the way we're trending with kindergarten enrollment. And we'll talk about preschool in a little bit, but some transportation costs that could come with preschool. Jen is going to be looking up, you know, we've had high cost students move into the district, some who have moved out of the district. So, you know, just trying to figure out where we are with all of that as we move forward.
So, I just want to mention, in case anybody else is available.
In that meeting, Mr. Chair starts at 6:30.
Six.
Six.
Thank you, sir.
Six o'clock Thursday, Town Hall. Thanks, Jerry.
Work meeting, I won't be there, but I'll be there in spirit.
Okay. Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Nope, that was great. I just want to thank all the staff for the, who we both led and participated in the professional development day on Friday. We had all of our staff took part in a variety of different programs this morning. We had our staff, we've been, Ruler has been a focus of ours throughout this year and next year. But we did continue training on that, Vision of the Graduate, our other big initiative this year. We had a number of teams throughout the district designing Vision of the Graduate experiences, assured experiences for kids to have throughout their time in the schools. And we had a presentation, our BCBA's did a presentation to the staff. And the, all culminated in the afternoon. We had a really powerful, it was a very sobering, it was a state mandated training. But Mike found someone from the Department of Children and Families that did a presentation on human trafficking, primarily as it relates to child labor and sex trafficking. And like I said, it was kind of a sobering way to end the professional development, but just really powerful and some of the stuff that's going on and sadly, some of the things that, you know, we've actually seen in our own, in our own district, you know, especially with the proliferation of the internet and the exploitation of kids in that way as well. So, it was a really, I thought it was a really productive Friday. I was really, really pleased with everything. And then, my last piece, you know, I know we've talked about preschool quite a bit this year as we've been dealing with, you know, unprecedented enrollment for the last couple of years. I think Kelly, Jen, Kelly, Jen and I sat down with some of the preschool staff to analyze some of the solutions for next year and hopefully beyond. And, you know, when we talked about the, when we talked about the program, one theme kept resonating throughout and that was, you know, the idea of keeping the program in one location. You know, as you remember, when I discussed this in the past, one of the possibilities was moving a class over to Stepney. And, you know, I think the overwhelming consensus from the staff there and Kelly and Jen is, it's much, we lose a lot when we do that. We knew that going into it, that, you know, people traveling, the itinerant staff, there's a lot of, there's a lot to lose with that. So, I do want to thank Jen and Kelly and I'm going to ask them to come up and just give a quick overview of the model that, you know, we're looking to implement next year that'll continue to allow us to provide the exceptional service that we do to our students and families. So, Jen and Kelly, come on up.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so as Joe mentioned, our preschool is growing as we know. We have 106 students currently in our preschool program and we're happy to say that we just opened up that fifth classroom. That's been open for about two weeks now. So, we're happy about that. So, we're going to talk about the current model first before we talk about our proposed model. So, right now, we have five classrooms. We have four large classrooms and one smaller classroom. That's our fifth one that was just opened up. And we have one session per day right now. We have the threes and fours are together, but the three-year-olds only stay for three hours and 15 minutes and the four-year-olds actually stay for five hours. Okay? The number of days a student attends the preschool just depends on PPT recommendations. So, that's decided amongst the team and the parents. Typically, right now, our threes attend three days a week and our four-year-olds tend about four to five days a week. Okay, but we're in session every day. So, kids are there all day and then from 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock every day, we have collaboration meetings and we have PPT meetings, et cetera. Okay, so that's our current model. So, our proposed model is that we're still going to have five classrooms with threes and fours. We're still going to have four large classrooms and one smaller one. But our proposal is that we'd like to do two sessions. We'd like to do an AM session and a PM session. So, the amount of time the students are going to be in class each day, in preschool each day, would be two hours and 45 minutes. Okay? So, we'd have an 8:15 to 11:00 and then we'd have a 12:00 to 2:45. Okay? And the other difference is that the, we're going to have four, the students will be in the building four days a week versus the five. Because on the fifth day, which we're looking at it being a Wednesday to break up the week, we would have our team collaboration meetings, we would have our PPT meetings and our screenings, et cetera. So, that would be the difference between the two.
So, Jen, hour-wise, compare your new proposal to the old one. Let's look at the four-year, oh, you have it coming?
It's coming.
Thank you.
It's coming. So, if you just wait, I can answer more, but it's coming. We're going to talk about that. So, as we talked about before, this, we're going to be able to reduce class size and still leaving room for future enrollment if we do this, this process, okay? If we move to this next process. All right, Kelly's going to talk about the shift.
So, here's how I compare. So, in either model, we have certainly our five classes and our five teachers. But the number of sessions, obviously, right now, we're doing five sessions because we have one session a day. Next year, we're hoping to do 10 sessions because each of those five classes are going to have essentially two sections. So, class sizes right now, we have four classes of near 25. One teacher has 26 on her roster right now. And we have one class of 10. So, we're servicing 110 students, but that's a really, really, that's like maximum capacity, absolutely, what we're doing right now. So, what we're shifting to is looking at four classes of 15 students maximum. One class would still be that 10 students because it's a smaller space location and also more intense needs of those students. But with this model, we can serve up to 140 students. So, if we see this increase in enrollment next year, we're still going to have some padding there because, you know, as we know, we start the year smaller numbers and we increase as the year goes on. And Jerry, to answer your question, so right now, we're doing three hours and 15 minutes or five hours. And this is a reduction, obviously, to two hours and 45 minutes. But on the next slide, you'll see how we compare it to districts in the surrounding area. These are just some data points I could pull. So, here's where we are currently and our proposed numbers, length of school days, class size right now is 25. It ranges from 23 to 26. And next year, we're looking at a maximum of 15. How we compare to Fairfield, Trumbull and Shelton is there. So, you'll see they're all doing in between, you know, 2.45 to 2.75 or 3.5. And their class sizes are between.
Much smaller.
So, why are we doing this? We're doing this because we are emphasizing quality over quantity. We know that a five-hour day is really important, especially for four-year-olds, but when you're a five-hour day with lots of other kids around you, our preschool teachers are working super hard to give every child the attention they need. With a smaller group size, obviously, you could do that more and they'll have more attention to that teacher than each student. We are in line with surrounding districts who are averaging 2.5 to three hours a day, so we'd be right in line with them. And physical space, Monroe Elementary is first day. So, this will help us with that physical space problem. We can service more students this way. And it also gives parents flexibility and options too. So, not everybody wants to have their child in every day or, you know, they want to have the option of choosing three days or four days at a morning or a PM. What works with their family, so.
And you know that, you know by surveying them? How do you know that?
That's actually what the neighboring.
Facilities?
Yeah. Do, yeah.
Thank you.
Go back to this one if you wanted to look at this. Also, to add to this as well, we have nine itinerant students right now who only come in for speech services. And right now, they're all coming into Monroe Elementary. So, what we're going to do next year is they're going to go to their districted school, which will be a good transition for them. So, if they have, if they need speech services and they're supposed to be at Font Hollow, they'll go to Font Hollow for their speech services. So, they'll get used to being, going into that building. So, we're, which will be nice because we'll have less students coming into the preschool program every day. And they'll go to their school where they're going to go later on.
Anybody have any questions?
Are you going to split the threes and the fours? So, or they're still going to be nice?
They're going to be next.
And you said the parents will still have the option of sending them one day, two days, or all four?
Three or four days.
Okay.
Right now, we have parents of typical students can choose three, four or five days. So, this would be choosing three or four. But for our special education students, it would be a PPT decision as based on how much service they need. But the typical peers get to choose.
And you'd start this next year?
Yes.
What's the ratio, like typical, to identified?
We aim for 50/50. That's the goal.
What is it, though?
On October 1st, it's 50/50.
Right.
Well, this will help that significantly. Yeah.
It's a great model.
This model will help that issue significantly to keep the ratio at 50%. Students with IEPs and 50% students without.
Yeah, we'll be able to front-load more neighborhood peers this way without feeling the crunch of space, you know? We couldn't do that this year, knowing how many kids were coming.
Will the parents decide AM or PM, what's best for them? Or will you also try to get that blend in there? Like encourage people to go to this class because you.
Yeah. We'd like our neighborhood peers to be able to choose. I think that helps them choose our program, you know? So, when I've been doing screenings, last weekend, we have another one tomorrow, those parents, I'm saying, we want you to choose AM, PM, whatever works for you because we really, really need those kids. The special education students, we have to place them according to where their services are available. And so, for them, because it's not optional, we may just say, you know, your services have to be in the afternoon because we're full in the morning, that kind of thing. But in the beginning stages, certainly, it's like kind of first come, first served. We're hoping to grandfather in people who are already in the program so that they can choose and they feel good about this shift. So, we'll just have to see how the numbers fall.
And this will work with existing staff?
Yes.
And I'm sure they're pleased?
Yes, yes.
Great.
One thing that this will require, we didn't really talk about it for this, but we're just trying to get the model ready, is fee structure for next year. And we've started to work on that because it's going to be fewer hours for the students who are, the typical peers, you know, paid and paid to go. So, we want to make sure it's commensurate with the reduction in hours too. So, you know, we'll work on that. And that will get usually, I think in the June meeting, usually, put on our rate schedule for everything, so that'll be included there.
We'll just have to let parents know too of the change?
Yes.
They can plan daycare and all of that.
And it will require an additional bus? Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, it will require an additional bus. So, we'll be, we'll have four buses running.
So, yeah, if you go back a slide, Jen?
Because of the tier, yeah.
11:00 to 2:45. We needed that because that's the entire school day for the teachers. So, that 11:00 to 12:00 gives them their prep time, or some of their prep time because we'll need it some of that Wednesday for the prep time and their lunch time. So, we'll have a bus coming in at 11:00, bringing the kids home, and then coming in at 12:00 to drop those kids off. So, we do have to add a bus, so.
But one less day.
I'm sorry?
But one less day.
Right. One less day, correct.
Yeah.
We have to add a bus for that 2:45 run.
Can that be figured into that non-tier structure? I mean, the fee structure or?
Mike and, Mike and I are in talks about that. Right now.
All right, because we've already passed our budget for next year and I know a bus is about $80,000 a year, so.
That's what we, and that was part of the conversation earlier about talking to Board of Finance, I don't know what things have changed since November when we started putting our budget together.
Does needing it one less day help offset the increase of the?
Sure helps that a little bit.
It will.
Does Mike know it's four days? Oh, yes, okay.
And that one small class, is that going to be like a more intensive intervention-type program?
Yes, and it is right now. For more of our complex learners that have, you know, behavioral needs. So, the BCBA's in there the majority of the day and that's where our brand-new teacher is working right now. So, there are 10 students in there as we speak.
What's your?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. What's your dedicated staff to the preschool, like?
We have five teachers and we have paraeducators depending on who need, what, how many we need. We have one in each room and then we also have extra paraeducators for any students that needs one-to-ones. We have a speech and language pathologist.
Full-time?
Yes, a full-time speech and language pathologist. And then, next year, we're going to have a 1.3 speech and language pathologist to assist because we're getting so much bigger. And then, we, our OT and PT share time with other, in others in the building. And we have the, our own BCBA in the preschool program.
Just for preschool?
Just for preschool.
I think it'll be interesting to track if that intensive early intervention helps with your outplacement numbers later on.
Yes, it definitely will.
That would be nice to see.
Yes.
I think with our space limitations, this is a good plan.
Yeah.
And we'll see how it goes with watching our numbers and see what happens, you know, towards, towards the end of the year. We should have a better idea. Is the board comfortable with this? Do we have consensus?
I think it's great. This is a great compromise considering.
It's got to pay $5,400 for a bus.
I heard you were driving it.
Yeah. It's the magic school bus. It's going to drive itself.
All right, Joe, so move forward. Thank you. Joe, we have a presentation, so I'm going to stay right here if you want to get that going.
Absolutely. I invite Jamie Sherry up. Last month, we had a chance to hear from Kevin Walsh and Roseanne Houghton about our kind of a comprehensive look of the scope and sequence of our math curriculum. And Jamie's going to do a similar thing. This is a kind of a four-point, a four-part series that we're doing just to keep the board, you know, aware of what's happening and our K-12 progressions in our core academic areas. So, Jamie's here tonight as the instructional leader for social studies to talk about our K-12 sequence in social studies. And next month, we'll have Jim Stossel and Roseanne Houghton to talk about science.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to talk about history and social studies curriculum, K-12 in Monroe. So, I wanted to start with our historical thinking skills. These are the skills that we embed in all of our social studies classrooms. The biggest one being inquiry. We use a lot of the inquiry-based learning. Students learn from different sources, learn from different documents that they're exposed to. We also do some sourcing, looking at where sources are from. We balance perspectives. We build arguments and students make arguments with their historical thinking. We look at, you know, where documents are based on the historical context and which period of history it falls in. We do a lot with cause and effect, you know, what happened in history and how did it affect society? We look at how things change over time. And one of the biggest things we do is we do a lot of research. So, we look at primary, secondary sources and craft research projects and research papers depending on the course level. Throughout the elementary level, social studies is really taught alongside the English Language Arts. So, we see a lot of intermixing between ELA time and social studies time as students read and write about social studies as well as other types of reading and writing they do in ELA. When it comes to the middle school, our social studies courses are also supporting ELA through our ASVAC practice in reading, writing and research skills. And then, at the high school, we're supporting our ELA learning through our SAT reading of nonfiction. So, a portion of the SAT is reading for social studies. So, we look at those documents in the same tools that the ELA teachers do through command of evidence, words in context and understanding of evidence-based reading. So, we're supporting our ELA learning as well in social studies. So, starting with our elementary curriculum, what's great about our elementary curriculum is it starts really small for students and then kind of goes out in a concentric circle. So, in kindergarten, students are learning about themselves, their family, their school and the community that they belong to. And then, in first grade, it gets a little bigger and we look at our town of Monroe, community helpers. This is where our first graders go on their big field trip to the town hall. They get their first library card and they get to see themselves in the community that they're studying. In second grade, we learn about Monroe as a community from past to present. So, they learn about the history of Monroe and how it still exists in the present. In third grade, we're getting a little bigger now. We're looking at Connecticut. So, this is our opportunity to study Connecticut history and specifically look at our Native Americans that existed in Connecticut as well. Now, we're getting even bigger in fourth grade by looking at our country. So, students study the regions of the United States and we weave in Native American history throughout that as well, looking at the different regional tribes that existed. So, looking at the West and looking at the tribes specific to the West and looking at, you know, the Southern tribes, et cetera. So, getting bigger. And then, in fifth grade, students start what will be their first third of US history. So, US history is taught in fifth grade, again in eighth grade, and then again in 11th grade, each kind of taking a third of that course, that long US history. So, in US history in fifth grade, they study everything from the early pre-colonial colonies that existed and they go up into the founding of our government, so the Constitution. And this is where our Kid Governor program exists. And as hopefully you all know, we have our Kid Governor, Ellie, who actually is putting out some of her first platforms this week. So, this is where that program lives and it's really great because it's that applied history. They're learning about how the government is formed, and they're actually getting to figure it out on their own as well by trying to run for office. In our sixth grade, we start to look at the world at large. So, sixth grade uses the theme of geography, the five themes of geography, movement, region, human environment interaction, location and place, to examine different parts of the globe. And specifically, in the sixth grade, we look at the Western Hemisphere. So, students learn about North America, our neighbors, Canada and Mexico, the Caribbean and South America. And then, in seventh grade, we keep that geography, history, culture lens, but we focus on the eastern part of the globe, and we look at Africa, the Middle East, Asia, and Europe. Still looking at geography, history, culture. And then, in eighth grade, we pick back up that US history course, and we go a little bit backwards, back to colonial America, to give students that foundation again, and they learn all the way up into the Civil War. By high school, we're looking at world history again, and this time, we're looking, kind of going back to where they left off in seventh grade with Europe, looking at Greece and Rome, and we bring students all the way to World War II from a global perspective. Tenth grade's the first time where students kind of take a different path, perhaps. So, in 10th grade, the majority of our students do a semester in civics or American government and a semester in contemporary world issues. That's the world history course brought to the modern day, starting with the Holocaust around World War II, all the way up into the present day. Or, some students elect to take our Advanced Placement Government course, and this is a full-year government course that they can take. But, they still take Holocaust education at the end, and I'll talk about why that is after the AP test. In 11th grade, we're picking up that US history train again, and we're doing it from Reconstruction, which is the period right after the Civil War, so picking up right from eighth grade and bringing it to the modern day. Some students can elect to take American Studies their junior year. That's a two-period course that covers the same historical content, but it's taught along with an English Language Arts teacher, and so they get two periods. It's interwoven, so the books that you read about in the literature course align with the time periods or themes of the history course. So, it's kind of an interwoven humanities course. Or, some students choose to take Advanced Placement US History, and the only difference there is that the College Board curriculum has them starting in pre-colonial America, going all the way to the present. So, they take a little bit of a longer view of US history than our students who take it at the college-prepper honors level. Starting in ninth grade, but most of our students are in 10th, 11th, and 12th, students get the option to take additional electives, and this is what most of our seniors do. On the left side, you see our semester courses. These are courses that you take for half the year, and we offer a great, many different courses that really fit with students and what they want to do and what they want to study. So, we have things like psychology, law and society, economics, Modern American Problems looks at the problems of today, Facing History in Ourselves, looks at the Holocaust and other important topics of identity, and Diverse Voices looks at the different views and perspectives. Our full-year courses on the right are mostly our college-level courses, but some other ones that we have that get to run for a full year. We have AP Psychology, AP Human Geography, which we've only had for the last couple of years, UConn World History. This year was the first year we implemented the African-American, Black, Puerto Rican, and Latino Studies course, and then we also have Child Development. In addition, right now, we're working with Southern Connecticut State University for a partnership to try and get some of our courses, both in the semester and full year, to be granted credit through Southern Connecticut State. So, we're kind of, we're in the application process. So, a couple of these courses may have the opportunity for students to get Southern credit as a result. And then, lastly, I wanted to just talk about how we're addressing some of the changing standards in Connecticut legislation. As you may know, the Connecticut legislator has put out different laws and acts related to Social Studies education. So, one of the first ones they did was the Holocaust and Genocide Education Act. We cover this in both seventh grade and our sophomore classes. Both contemporary world issues or AP Government, if students choose to take that course, still receive our Holocaust education. Last year, they put the Act concerning the inclusion of Black and Latino Studies. We have offered that course this year, and it will run again next year due to higher enrollment. So, we're going to run that.